Good evening, everyone. It's 5:01 PM on Monday, June 14, 2021. And we're here tonight for Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals hearing as a continuation of a prior hearing for 238 Wilson Road in pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 38, Section 18. We are meeting via Zoom technology. And I think we're going to be pretty much ready to go. We already read the advertisement last time. And we hear again on a petition filed by Dina, Arndt, De Jong, and Habitat for Humanity et al. for the property at 238 Wilson Road, seeking dimensional variance or special permit to build a new residence in place of a demolished, fire-damaged, original dwelling. Inspector Building said denied the building permit because of the property was in violation. I know I read this in total last time, so I won't go into it totally this time. And otherwise, I think we're going to be pretty much ready to go. We had continued the matter so that we could ask the question of town council. And I did speak to attorney Dan Skrip, who was counsel for us, and asked him the question whether there was any effect on the two-year reconstruction period based upon the prior owner's application for a building permit that was never, that never was utilized. And he came back to us and said that there was no effect. And that two-year period has in fact run, and there are no more protections afforded to this property relative to the nonconformities. Okay. Anybody else want to add anything else before we get started?
We're here, this is my client, and I wanted to say that I appreciate the inquiry and the response of the, of the council. I think that what we understood from the beginning is that I hope the sins of the prior owner don't get visited on my clients. Because I really don't know, and I think I said that at the last meeting, why it was that the individual who had the conflagration had the fire and then actually sought and got a building permit and then for some reason didn't act timely. And that led the inspector to revoke that permit. But that we weren't looking to proceed based on the prior owner's action or inaction, but rather we recognize that the lot, as the inspector says when he evaluated the request, obviously doesn't conform to many of the dimensional regulations now in effect in the town of Nahat. But that when the building was built in the 1920s, before such regulations existed, it obviously conformed to the then-regulations and thereafter was protected as a pre-existing nonconforming structure. I do think, if you've seen the site, there's a portion that was left, and I don't know whether it was purposeful of the original foundation. I know in my experience, I've had some people take a building down and retain a portion of it because they didn't want the land to lose whatever grandfather protection it may have been entitled to. And so they keep some portion of the old structure. We aren't proceeding on that basis. I think we were proceeding on the basis that obviously we can't change the dimensions of the lot. We can't change the existing dimensional regulations within the town. But we start with, we propose a use that is a permitted use in the district. It's a single-family home. We also start with the premise that land obviously has its value and its utility and what it can be used for. And the use of this land and the highest and best use of this land is as a residence, a single-family residence. And I think the real question that then remains is what type residence? And what residence that was there, how should that affect my client's proposals? And that's why he's here this evening, because I think he had a very simple approach. He said to me after the last hearing that, you know, I hear what they're saying and I understand what they're saying. Because I said to him, I said, I thought there was some misunderstanding about what relief we were seeking and why we were seeking it, or that there was some information that was not accurate, whether it was the height of the building or the front setback. And so rather than ask, obviously, we know that the variance application process is not to change the zoning in a district, but to ask one to vary it and that we have a burden to show you why we think it should be. I would point out that the statute does say that conditions that owe to topography or shape are those which are legitimate to be considered. I don't think proposing a single-family dwelling of the type that we're about to present is a derogation from the intent or the purposes of the zoning bylaw. And I don't think it is contrary to the public good to restore to the tax rolls in the town of Nahat and have a place to be welcoming for somebody who wants to live in Nahat and build a new contemporaneous with the building code structure that would conform to the state building code. The question is, what can we do to satisfy the zoning? And at this point, I'm going to stop talking because I think my client can best advocate for himself, which is, I would say, for me, a rare exception, because often I tell people, don't speak unless I kick you. But here, I'm going to let him speak because he said to me, and I think the simplest terms, I heard them last time. I think I understand what they want. And he's done a little PowerPoint presentation, which should just take a few minutes. But I think at the end of it, essentially, what he would hope you would conclude is that what he proposes is not dissimilar from what was there before. In some ways, it's improved, but it's in no way larger or more intense use than what had previously been there. So if I might, I would let him show you that PowerPoint, which compares the old dwelling, his proposed dwelling, which he's made changes from, I would say, from the plans that we originally filed. I know there was a concern about the parking space in the garage. There was a concern about the overhang. There was a concern about the height of the building. And I think if you see his presentation, as I have, and you look at and compare what was there with what he proposes, then at least he has given you the best information he has with respect to what it is he proposes and what he would hope that you would consider.
Okay. Excuse me, before we go any further, are you saying to us this evening that you are submitting a new plan tonight?
I wouldn't say it's new. I'd say it was different than the previous plan in that we had heard from members, there were some concerns about the garage, about the overhang. I don't think we ever proposed a building that was more in elevation than the existing. And I do think that there's some confusion about what the front setback of the prior home was and what we proposed. But yes, the PowerPoint presentation, I think, takes the old house and takes what's proposed. But as I understand it, and we could speak to the three, I think the changes were in the garage and the overhang.
Yes.
That's what I understand is the difference.
Let me just make it really clear, all that. If there are changes to the plans, we would have to see the new plans, and they have to be submitted also to the planning board and to the other town, you know, boards, the Board of Health, et cetera. There's a 35-day review period for special permits that's required with an application. So in the event that there are new plans that involve a special permit, we would have to, you know, start this process pretty much over again. So do you want to continue now? And will he?
I would like to continue only because maybe it's my misunderstanding, but we didn't add anything, we reduced. So that is a change I acknowledge, but it's not to the extent that we did something greater than what you saw. It's actually in two areas, as I understand it.
Okay, let's hear the presentation so we can move on. Thank you, sir.
Am I, could you allow me to scan my screen?
Can they hear you?
Yep, we can hear them.
Okay.
Should be all set.
Yep. So let's see if I can get this to work.
Mr. De Jong, just bear in mind that, you know, we all live in Nahat, and so we are familiar with a lot of it.
Yeah.
Don't want to go too crazy.
No, I won't get crazy. No, 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 seriously, it's not crazy. So I just listed the history, some of which you've already heard, right? But the original house, 1920s, and then destroyed by fire, demolished, rebuilt, permit applied for in July of 2019, and permit issued December, the day after Christmas, 2019. And I bought it on February 1st, a purchase and sale agreement. And you see on the right, the house after the fire. I think this is actually the most important slide to begin with. So this is the plot plan that Surveyor.
Mr. Fayer.
Yeah, Chuck Fayer made. Where on the left is the existing, what he calls existing, that has the original dwelling on it. And then on the right was my design that I put in for consideration. You can see that there was two areas in that design that he marked in black here that were over where the original dwelling was. And I heard you loud and clear, I think, last time, that you were not interested in a larger building. I also heard some concerns about an additional deck. I thought, well, I can either wait and go through this process, or I can take proactive and see what we can do to change the design so it would fit the original dwelling. And so that's what we've done. We've made, we've made the house smaller. We pushed the garage in as well as the front door. We've taken that overhang out and said, make it fit exactly within the footprint of the original house. So that takes that 3.8 foot on the right off, and the three-foot overhang on the right as well. And we removed that deck.
Mr. De Jong, I just want to make it clear that no, at no time did we ever say that if this proposed property was within the original dwelling footprint, that it was going to be allowed.
I totally understand that.
Make sure you understand that.
I know.
This is a nonconforming property, no matter what you do.
I totally understand that. And I'm also aware of the, for the original dwelling, it would need significant number of variances as well. So I understand it.
Okay.
I guess what I'm trying to show is though, that I'm listening to what you're telling me and seeing if I can make it work one way or another, right?
But we haven't told you anything yet. That's why I want to make sure that you understand that.
Okay. So my goal is to maintain residential status, restore the original use. It peaks marginally lower than the original house. It takes a piece of the top floor off, which would then improve views to the neighbors. It includes an in-house garage, so where there was previously living space. I've actually put a garage, including a foundation, in the design within the house, parking in the attic, if you like, allowing for much safer road access. And then it's a design that goes rather well with a house next door, which is also a square kind of collection of boxes. But this, I think, is where it gets interesting. So you'll see on the left is a drawing of the original house. On the right is superimposed the design I proposed, and the light gray area is the outline of the original house. So you can see, for example, here on the right, the roof line of the original house sticks out further. The whole house fits within. There is a difference here where there's a little sloping roof in the original house. I've made that into a straight deck in the design. But other than that, it fits in exactly. On the south elevation, this is, you'll remember this from the photo I just showed with the fire damage, that was the original house. And again, there's a dormer here on the right, you see? So the piece that we have at the back fits within that dormer. And obviously, we've lost the pitched roof line. The other side elevation, the same again. So the gray is that is the original house, superimposed on the new design. You can see the house setback a little further. The roof is lower here. And on the back, again, you can see all the elevations exactly match. This square piece fits within the dormer on the right here, and then this pitched roof is lost in this design. And I hear you that there's no rights to this, but I wanted to show that I'm doing my best to try and work with the materials there. But you're absolutely right. It's still, in that adjustment program, still requires a significant number of variances with the building code, but which were also needed for that rebuild permit that you granted, right? So that's, that was my homework while you were doing your homework. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
That was it?
Thank you. Okay. So at this point in the hearing, does anyone have any questions for the petitioner?
Johnson, I have a question. The answer that we got from Dan Skrip, can you, can you put in layman's terms what he said?
What he said is that the two-year period for reconstruction is gone.
Which means?
Which means that any protections afforded for the nonconformity is completely gone.
Okay.
But they're not allowed to build as a right under the footprint. They're not allowed to do anything. They need a variance for almost everything that they're doing on this property. Okay, to build new, on a nonconforming lot with nonconforming setbacks, we're going to need variances for all these items.
So the fact that there's a foundation.
Means nothing.
Means nothing. Okay.
Absolutely nothing.
Okay.
He made that very clear.
So I'm not part of tonight's panel, but if you'll entertain the input, the clarification is that basically the inaction on the previous permit takes the applicant back to a situation as if this were bare land and if he were applying for a building permit to do new construction from the ground up.
Yeah, it's done. It can't be the first time it ever happened.
No more comments from anyone, please, until we're ready for comments. Thank you. All right, so that's the, that's the status of where we are today.
Is under, in our bylaws, are there any limits to the number of variances that can be allowed on a residential piece of property?
No. Do you want to worry of any limits? I'm not worried of any limits.
No.
But usually, you know, we're lucky to allow one or two at the most, but.
Right, that's, I just wondered if there was a number that was out there.
Okay. We essentially would have to take each of the seven, if there's still seven, and handle them separately. We're looking at the separate.
But can we get into deliberations now? Because before we do that, Peter, I wanted to make sure I asked all the questions.
Yep.
So the next question we had, if we didn't have any more questions for the board right now, from the board right now, is to see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application. Is there anyone present? There were two people listed who are not speaking. Does anyone like to speak in favor?
I'll speak in favor. I'm the architect designer of working with R&amp;D Young.
Sir, could you state your name and your address? And do you live in Nahat?
Yes. I do not.
Do you live in Nahat? Do you live in Nahat?
No, I do not.
Only take names of people who, you know, comments of people usually who live in Nahat.
Understood. Okay.
Isn't that right, everybody? Am I wrong about that? We only usually get people who live in Nahat. Is that right, Peter?
Right. That's correct. I mean, as the architect, if you wanted to put input in.
Right, of course, we'd be happy.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'd be happy to hear from you.
Okay, I just, yeah, my name is Graham Salzberg. I live in Marblehead, and I worked very closely with R&amp;D Young on, very familiar with the process that he's gone through in purchasing the property and worked very, very closely with him to sort of make this, this house conform to whatever. I know, I understand, I understand what we've learned thus far, as far as the exemption, not being able to build on the original footprint. But we, in any case, we've worked very, very hard to try and make it fit within the same exact footprint. If that were, you know, if it were as a right to be able to do that, I understand it's not. But I just wanted to say that we were sensitive, not just to the property and the footprint, but also to the neighbors and height, trying to maintain the original view corridors, if not improve them by lowering the ridge line and some of the massings and also materiality. We've looked at some of the neighboring properties and, and didn't want to do anything that made it stand out. And we worked really, really hard to kind of make it fit in with the fabric of the vocabulary of the neighborhood in Nahat. And Arndt and I are also friends, and we bike in Nahat almost bi-weekly, and we love, we love the community there, and we love the scenery and the people. He's very interested in becoming part of that community. And so we're just putting our best foot forward, and that's basically all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'm actually in favor of the property, in favor of the petition? Or is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application, petition tonight? I see two other people who are present, but I'm speaking. All right, so we're going to close up the hearing for anyone who would like to speak in opposition, unless they say so now. Okay. So we're going to move on to our deliberations, and that's when we talk amongst ourselves. If we have questions for you or your counsel, we'll let you know. Okay? All right. So one thing I'm concerned about is, first of all, we've got a presentation for, presentation for a new, basically, a new building, and we don't have all of the dimensional requirements laid out for us for that. That's one concern I have. Another concern I have, I'll just put my concerns out there, if anybody else wants to add their own, is that, you know, we're not supposed to be allowing nonconformities in perpetuity. I think this is one of those cases where, you know, if there's any hardship on this property, it's self-imposed. And I think this applicant is actually in a purchase and sale agreement, not technically the owner yet, probably contingent upon this, I'm guessing. And I think they're asking for too much. Is my, does everybody else think?
You know, I'm kind of concerned in the exact opposite direction, that we're almost going to essentially say that a property that was extremely valuable four years ago is now due to, you know, what's happened over the last few years, essentially worthless? I don't know. That, that strikes me in an odd way, that that's essentially the case if we don't have any ability to grant some relief. And frankly, I'm not, I'm not convinced that, that there aren't pathways to granting relief or arguing that no structure can be built on this property again. Now, you cannot build a conforming structure on this property, essentially, right? So it puts you in a position of, it's either worthless, or there's a path to some sort of relief, or some sort of argument that, you know, you don't need all of that relief.
Why is the value any of our concern, Max?
Why is the value any of our concern? Well, I mean.
Our concern is supposed to be the bylaws and the nonconformities and the light in the air and.
Well, because we live in a town full of nonconforming structures, right? And probably, we all probably live in nonconforming structures. And, and the, and the, and the tax, the tax roll relies on taxing of nonconforming structures. So I know that zoning is, is set up in such a way to, that, that nonconforming structures are not supposed to happen in perpetuity. But that's, that's sort of a myth, you know? That's not the reality that we all live in. We're not moving towards a Nahat that is made up of mostly conforming structures. That's, that's not true. And I'm, I'm not convinced that, that this is even under 48 in our bylaw, you know, not a viable, a viable lot, frankly.
Anybody else want to add to the deliberations?
Yeah. A question I got. Is there anything that could be built on this property that does not require variances? Are there, are there any? But I, we're looking at seven variants. What could be built on this property that would be conforming? Anything?
A pretty narrow house. Yeah. I mean, you know, if you, if you get going to 10, 10-foot side setbacks, it'd be a pretty narrow house. You could eliminate that one.
The front setback.
Again.
Right?
Yeah, it's 15.7 now? Oh, wait a minute. 19.5, I think, is the old. Yeah. So, so, so you could eliminate one by making it a half a foot smaller for the setback, the Wilson Road side.
Well, the front setback's supposed to be 25.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm thinking 20. I'm sorry.
So my, my point being, it's, it's impossible to build on this piece of property without granting variance. So if we don't grant any variances, we've taken a piece of property that's probably worth $700,000, $800,000, and we've decided that it's worth nothing.
Well, the prior owner decides that. They took, they probably took the insurance money, if there was any, pocketed it, and then donated the house. I don't know what, I'm assuming that's what they did. I don't have any idea.
We understand the current, the current, the current technical owner is Habitat for Humanity and that the applicant is a, somebody has a purchase and sale agreement. Is that right?
Correct. And actually, the owner of the property is Essex Habitat for Humanity and the Gordon Cornwell Theological Seminary, Inc.
Okay, both nonprofits, basically.
Right.
And so assuming that nothing of substance can be built on the property, then we are facing a situation where potentially strict enforcement of these zoning regulations will cause the property to be barren and therefore potentially create an incentive for whoever is the owner, basically, to walk away from it because it has no economic profit.
Unless they sold it to neighbors or something like that.
Or, and here is the stretch, it's Gordon, is it, if it's Gordon College.
The theological seminary.
They could, they could, they could pull the Dover Amendment and build whatever they want.
As long as it meets the dimensional requirements. They must adhere to a dimensional requirement under the Dover Amendment.
That's right. And they also would have to use it for nonprofit purposes under the Dover Amendment.
Right.
Educational purposes, no?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Peter, are you saying you want a college to build?
I don't.
A school on the ocean in Nahat? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm just.
Because that's like the worst thing in the world.
I, I, no, I, I, I have to kind of agree with Max and David. I mean, you know, and this, I'm almost wondering if we would have any input from the planning board on this, but we're essentially taking tax dollars away from the town and creating, I don't think our job here is to protect the zoning bylaws so much that we create a vacant lot. And that's essentially what we would be doing. And don't get me wrong, I know that the previous owners made huge mistakes. They took the money and ran. But we're going to be stuck with a vacant lot and less tax dollars coming in from this piece of property.
Wasn't there a letter from the planning board on this that I read at the last state? I think there was.
I'm trying to, yeah, look through my file, all files.
Yeah, I thought there was, but.
While you all are looking through, while you all are looking through that, let me, let me offer a, a thought. And I'm analogizing this situation to the situation of flood insurance, which is a federally driven program. But the thrust of flood insurance programs is to force the, is to impose upon coastal landowners the requirement to pay commercial insurance rates for flood insurance, which are very much above the current rates. And essentially, one by one, property by property, drive out the existing properties in the floodplain so that we would essentially have a floodplain that is free of properties and therefore free of the need of flood insurance. Now, that's, that's, that's a problem that's gone on and fits and starts. But we need to ask ourselves, is there a similar incentive on the part of our zoning bylaw? In other words, to drive out nonconforming properties in these tightly packed spaces of Little Nahat?
Yeah, but it'd be one thing if, if this gave us some sort of relief. I mean, okay, it gives two neighbors relief and maybe, you know, a few houses on the backside. But this isn't really, I mean, where it's located, it's, I don't know that it makes that much of an impact, to be honest. I totally understand what you're getting at, but I, I don't know.
What about the idea that, Peter, what about the idea that we don't even have, you know, the final plans from what he's suggesting tonight?
Yeah.
We don't have that. We need to have, we're supposed to have the final plans that you, that we're voting on, and we don't have those. Those little cards.
Yeah, because, because the other thing is, we did have a, we did have a. Yeah, because, because the other thing is, we did have a, um, we did have a neighbor that spoke um against because the house was going to be bigger. And I, if I recall correctly, he did say something like, you know, if he was building the same hot sized house, I wouldn't have a problem. And, I mean-
Maybe that's where else it's coming from, huh?
If the, if the prop, if the house were designed so that the first floor, meaning down bottom, were on stilts, then you would get rid of the problem of being in the flood zone.
Would you really though? You're still in the flood zone.
Well, you're in the flood zone, but you're not floodable.
Not in- You're not floodable when you got, when you're on stilts.
What about the FEMA regulations? I mean, this is a, a reconstruct.
I think what we need to, if I could just interject, I think what we need to do is, I've been told that because of the elevation of the lot, that it is not in the flood zone. But, I mean, the, every community has what's called community panels that are put out by FEMA uh and the agency's charged with the regulation of construction. And uh if it were in fact there, like on Plum Island, for example, many of the buildings built there are within the floodplain and are required by FEMA regulations um to be raised above the, the level of the floodplain, which often puts boards of appeals like you in the predicament of you may have a height restriction. And so somebody comes in and says, well, FEMA says I have to raise the building up four feet. And if I do, then I'm going to violate your height regulation. So part of this is to make it work. Uh, we certainly don't have a problem with submitting the plan that we proposed, uh, trying to make it conform. But I really think the essence of the question was raised by a couple of members, which is, and I said at the outset, and maybe I didn't make it clear, land has its value and its utility. What could it be used for? Now, if we found a discovered oil or uranium on this site, then the highest and best use would be a uranium mine or a, an oil. That's not it.
Thank you, Vatali, thank you for your comment.
District, where a single family is a permitted use. What's being proposed is a permitted use. We can't make the lot bigger, we can't change the dimensions of the lot. And we have tried to conform by dealing with the size of the building.
Mr. Vatali, have you, have you tried to minimize the extent of the variances that you're requesting? Has that exercise been done?
I think we have, when, and the problem we have is that to make a living space, to make a living space, you understand that a dwelling has to have a bathroom?
I do understand that.
It has to have a bedroom, and it has to have a kitchen, and the kitchen has to have a stove and a sink.
What's the square footage of the proposed structure?
So in, in, in terms of working with what makes it a dwelling unit, um, and the other is that we thought we made an improvement with respect to the parking by eliminating what we thought was a dangerous situation with the line of sight and the cars that were parked in the past closer to the roadway. And that's why we decided to incorporate a, a garage. But uh we can't make the lot bigger. And so that's, and we can't increase the size of the frontage. We can only deal with, and we don't have the authority to change what the table of dimensional regulations is. So our relief is to ask you to make a variance, if you would.
We, we get that, we understand that, okay, we do, we all understand that part of it, thank you. We're in the middle of our deliberations, um, and if we have any more questions, we'll let you know. All right, so anybody, what do you want to do?
Jocelyn, let me, a couple of questions. One, has uh the Concom had any comments regarding this?
Well, we have the Con, the order of conservation, uh, on our own condition. And I have, first of all, I haven't heard um from anyone regarding, again, regarding the FEMA that I decided to talk about before we were interrupted, um, and, and the fifty percent rule. For that, I mean, we're not even, we're, we're voting to reconstruct a property, you know, um, but anyway, everybody got the order of conditions that was in the package that I sent out to everyone.
Yeah, and I found the letter from the planning board.
And I did read that on the last date.
Can you, uh, Peter, can you tell us what the planning board said?
Yeah, so this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above captioned appeal to the ZBA, um, which is two thirty-eight Wilson Road. "We understand that the previous house was destroyed by fire January first, two thousand eighteen, so that this application does not meet the timing requirement of seven point zero three uh D and therefore cannot be rebuilt as a matter of right. The planning board believes that the intent of seven point zero three D is to bring lots and structures more into conformance with zoning bylaws over time. Also, the application does not contain a complete description of the prior structure. The planning board has concerns over the number of variances being requested and that uh result in a house that is overall very large relative to lot size." Respectfully submitted Town Planning Board.
All right.
I mean,
There's a couple of-
Do we want to suggest that there, they withdraw and give us a new application if they're going to do one? Because we don't even have the plans to vote on, so how are we going to do that tonight?
Right, right.
I, I do think we need, I do think we need actual plans, not changed plans. But I think also uh there, there's a couple of issues. You brought up the fifty percent rule.
Is it even in the flood zone though? Is the, is the property even in the flood zone?
No, no, well, yes.
He's saying no.
It is no.
So if it's not in the flood zone, then there's no fifty percent rule. He, Michael brought up the flood zone as an analogy, not, not as a-
Matter of fact, yeah.
That's correct, that's correct.
I don't, if, if, if it were, we don't even know what to base the fifty percent on, because there's nothing there.
He would never get a building permit even if we gave approval if he, if it violated the fifty percent rule. I mean, there's not even a fifty percent rule, this, this structure would have to be built compliant with FEMA regulations, no matter what permission we granted, so I don't, I don't see that as a major issue.
And we, and we do know that it's not in the floodplain?
I don't know that, but I don't think it really matters that much.
In other words, somebody else is going to make that determination.
Oh, Concom.
I applied for flood insurance, it was told not needed, not in the flood zone. I can send you the documentation and the flood map, it's in a, it's in an XO.
It is in the X zone after looking at the government FEMA maps.
Jocelyn?
X zone.
Jocelyn, Dave McCool here. I just wanted to find out, my question is this, what, if anything, could have been done so once the um, the homeowner, prior, prior homeowner applied for and received a building permit and they didn't commence construction within the two-year period? Is there anything they could have done to reserve rights? Um, you know, make an application or extension, is there anything they could have done to protect their rights?
In material now, because they have no rights, they're gone, they don't own the property. They didn't build on it, the two years left, it's all done. I checked on that with Dan Swett, that's the reason I called him.
Right.
There absolutely did nothing left.
But they could have, yes, Dave was asking, could they have done, they could have, they could have come to the zoning board and sought an extension of the the two-year period, but they didn't.
Okay. Okay.
You're right.
And I, I would go back to, uh, Jocelyn, what you said. I would suggest that uh the petitioners come back to us with an actual plan of a building that is exactly as it's, they're looking to build. And at the same time, I would suggest that you try to reduce the variances, or at least the dimensions of the variances as they uh will affect this property. In other words, you, yeah, you may have to scale it down a bit, but you have a better chance of getting seven variances passed.
Hopefully, there wouldn't be seven variances, but-
Yeah, you got a better chance of getting five.
That if, if, if the applicant does-
Get five or four or whatever.
Does do that, it's based upon your suggestion or whatever. It's based, I say only because he put the presentation forth on his screen. But that we're not required to accept it, and we may not, we may vote against it at that time, we may vote for it, we don't know. But we, right now, we're not, we don't have anything we can vote on tonight. Is that, is everybody in that agreement? Because what, what they're asking for right now in the paperwork is too much. Is that what everybody's in agreement with?
Well, we don't have the, I think we don't have the-
We don't have an actual, we don't have an approved-
We don't have the pro, the actual plan, so we don't know what the floor area ratio is going to be. We don't know what the, you know, we know some of these will stay the same, the width obviously, uh, but we don't know what the front setback is going to be.
Right.
So that means an application, an application needs to go through Wayne with all of those parameters so that he can evaluate them, correct?
We can do that.
Yeah, it needs, it needs to definitely, um, uh, plans need to be resubmitted. And, and I kind of agree with David that, you know, if you can reduce some of the variances, then it might be, um, you know.
So with the choices are, Mrs. Jiang, is really, if everybody's in agreement with this, tell me now, like, Dave McCool, Peter Max, David Walsh, we, we feel like, we, what you're asking for right now in the paperwork that we have, that which you have then modified, that paperwork as it sat would have been probably too much if we were to vote on it, I'm just guessing. Um, but if you, they're suggesting that if you wanted to bring in, submit new plans, that they'll be considered. Is that what everyone's saying?
Yeah.
I am, yes.
And what's the, what's the exact process back, back to the improvement that gets rejected and then back to the ZBA? Or can I, can I propose a plan directly to you?
Do we, not directly to us, it'd have to go to the building inspector, but here's a question, Jocelyn. Would we be able to continue, continue this hearing with, you know, to wait on a set of new plans?
I can have the plans done in days.
Well, that's one thing that we have to think about, because if the plans change considerably, do we need to re-notify the abutters?
I don't know, but my instinct would be yes.
Yeah. Yep, I think, I think um Michael's right.
We need a new application?
Well, the point is that they, there's nothing to be gained by having a situation where some abutter could claim to have been prejudiced by not note, being notified of the parameters of the new plans. So I don't know what the requirements are, I haven't studied them in, in, in precision. But it would seem to me that requiring new notice to the abutters would save the, the risk of what I just described. Spare the risk.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think that they've applied for relief on this property. It's been notified, there's been two meetings that would be continued, and they would be supplying additional modified plans that are seeking less relief than what was originally requested. Um, I don't think there's an issue with that, unless, the, the only thing I'm not sure about is the the other board's input. I, I, I've never had my head wrapped around that process at all. Um, so I don't know how much opportunity they need, I don't, I mean, that, that's a, that's a mess, but-
Yeah, it is, because a lot of, you know, no, most towns don't do that.
Yeah.
Don't do that thirty-five day thing.
I don't know why we, we are, but-
Well, because the law says that, as you know, under chapter eleven, I think is the section eleven, it says that if we are going to have the other boards look at things, we have to give them up to thirty-five days. Now, for example, Marblehead, I think Swampscut too, you, you're in Swampscut, so you would know. They don't do that. They, their other boards see the stuff, but they have to, I don't know, it's like probably they have their own time period, whatever it be. But that's why our, our petition takes so long. So the question is, do we need to, uh, do you want to offer that the applicant withdraw and reapply? Or do you want to offer the uh continuance?
Um, my feeling is that if he withdraws and reapplies, it would go in front of planning again. And planning would have a chance to look at it and maybe more favorable on the fact that he's tried to reduce the issues, the seven issues. Um, I, I'm just, I'm thinking the full process, process helps the owner more than hurts it, if that's something I can, you know, suggest.
In other words, withdraw and renew.
Yeah. It, it no, I, I, I think we're fine with, with continuing and waiting for a new set of plans. However, I think giving the planning board a chance to look at it, giving neighbors-
Give them a copy.
Giving neighbors notification and a chance to speak. I, my opinion is, I think it only helps the owner more than hurts the owner.
I think we can leave it up to them too, though. I mean, they-
Right.
They could almost take the risk of seeking the continuance, um, knowing that that could impact people on this board's feeling about it. It could impact the ability of an abutter to appeal it. But, you know, ultimately, it's their petition, right? It's their risk to, to bear. Um, because I, I think both ways sort of have merit. I mean, if you continue it, it's going to be quicker. If you withdraw and reapply, it's going to take longer, but it's, it's probably safer for them. Um, from the, you know, art, from the board's perspective, the ability to hear the planning board chime in, the ability of abutters to complain about it, and, but-
Or not.
Or not, right, but-
Yeah.
I, I think both are viable options that maybe they can, maybe why not let them pick, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the advantage, the other advantage as far as the board goes is if they withdraw it and it goes out in a, in a month or two or whatever, that you don't have to have the same members hearing it again.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I think Jocelyn does make a really good point that just because we're saying you can do this doesn't bind us to anything down the road. And that's important to note, that we don't have enough to really review right now. Yes, we think there may be pathways to some approval theoretically, but you can't hold your hat on that either, so it's, it's touchy.
So it looks like, is everybody, everyone here in agreement that you want to give them an option, give the applicant an option? We usually do that, but I don't see why we couldn't.
Why not?
Dave McCool, you okay with that?
Yes, yes, I'm okay with it.
Run another couple of months.
That's okay, that's okay. If it's a continuance, I'll be around, I'll figure it out.
I think we'll figure it out, even though-
Thank you. All right, so um Attorney Vatali and Mrs. Jiang, Jiang. What they're saying is that you do want to continue this matter um and for a period of time, we'll give you a timeframe once you tell us. And, and you can do the new plans, and we'll try and get them to the planning board and the abutters, give people a chance to respond. Um, or do you want to withdraw and start over with the full process, which tends to be a little safer, because then we re-advertise. Um, so it's up to you.
My, my counsel says probably go for the slow route and, and withdraw, re-advertise, because of the-
You'll get different members probably at that, in that sense too, because some of these members, for example, Dave McCool's going off the roster, someone else might not be available. So.
Yeah. So I think we'll withdraw and then we'll, we'll reapply, but it'll be very soon.
If we have a difference in our plans, we may not need as many variables.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Jiang, may I, just one question, is he kicking you?
No, I didn't kick you.
I can't tell you, I can't, absolutely can't.
Well, you're taking a good job I'm doing for you.
I, I always knew this was a difficult property when I first saw it, I, I always knew that. I knew I was, I was going to be in for the long haul. And I, I just want to find a way to make it work, so I'd, I'd rather take it back, uh, coming back with a drawing that I think makes for a nice house as well as satisfy some of your wishes and, and see whether we can get that going, that, that would be the best, I think.
Okay.
We need a motion now for this to accept the withdrawal? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the applicant's withdrawal of this petition.
Second, invite Pete Barber.
Any discussion on the motion? Are you all in favor?
David Walsh, aye.
Pete Barber, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Jocko Campbell, aye.
All right, that's withdrawal without prejudice, right? That's the-
That's the proper term, yeah.
Let me, let me just interject one thing if I may, even though I'm not on the panel this time. Um, to the extent that we're going to put this in front of the planning board again, is there a mechanism, it doesn't make sense, to flag to the planning board the concerns that we identified? In other words, that if this property is functionally unbuildable, is it the intent in the view of the planning board that the zoning bylaw have the effect of making the property basically turning it into a vacant lot such that its only value is for- Such that its only value is for, let's say, sale to a neighbor. Uh, or run the risk that the existing owner will let it turn into a, uh, you know, a, a weed lot.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, and, and, and Michael's concern is, is real because right now that. Lot, I, I've driven up there, it's concrete and weeds.
Yep.
And if we say, you know, nothing can be done there, it's going to remain concrete and weeds. Uh.
Not necessarily, Peter. And if the property becomes really decrepit, the town can bring a complaint against it and can put a.
I, I understand that, but that's.
Well, but that's going to be against a couple of nonprofits.
Right, exactly.
And the, the town has never been very good at that.
Well, and so let's say the town, the town brings a complaint and ends up taking it for tax liabilities, right? Then what the hell is it going to do with it?
Right.
Then we have to take care of. Interest for something and the right thing to eventually be there, you know?
Right.
And my, my point is this, this may require a rethinking of some provision of the zoning bylaws. And I'm not saying that this, that, that, that the action on that necessarily lies in the mouth of the planning board. But there are certainly somebody who's in a position to propose. A, a, a mechanism to be embedded in a new version of the zoning bylaw. That would deal with this situation, which seems to be something that nobody has thought of or dealt with before, right?
Right. I, I'm assuming this is something new.
Yeah, it's, all you're going to do is get rid of variances and make everything a special permit and you have that mechanism. There you go. Seriously, that's how, that's how Marblehead does it. It really is.
Alright, so we're, we're almost there. Alright, so we, we've accepted the motion and does anybody want to bring a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, I've got a question.
Okay.
I've got something separate and I just want to bring up, but I don't want to adjourn quite yet.
Go ahead.
Okay. What would the mechanism be? Since we've had it happen a couple of times recently. On a private home that wants to turn into a, into condos. Is there a mechanism right now or can there be one? By, by bylaw or whatever that. Their requirement would need to be go before the planning board and the zoning bylaw. Before a property can be accepted to turn into condos.
Condos are a form of ownership. I mean, it has nothing to do with, with zoning unless you are trying to. Go from one, you, one dwelling unit to two dwelling units.
That's, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
But it certainly is something, something that's subject to the, to the, to the power, the zoning power. And the fact that we don't address it now doesn't mean that we cannot. Certainly plenty of other municipalities. Have provisions one way or another, whether it be in the form of a zoning bylaw or something else. That, that, uh, impose requirements or, or prohibitions on, uh, condominiums. And it seems to me that the, the, the thing we dealt with last week brings us into focus, so. It, it's a, it's a timely thing to consider revamping the zoning law or at least some bylaw of the town. To deal with the provision of people who want to go to condos, right?
Can I ask, ask that? Cause I think Max raised the, the right point at the beginning. It's usually about use. And I go into other communities, I work in some zoning matters and I see it's always, always about use. It's not about, it's a form of ownership, right? That, that condominium piece. And it's all, you take a two-family house and you turn it into two condos. As long as you meet the requirements of the parking. Clear footage and the other, the zoning relief, zoning, uh, five parameters. That's what you're looking at.
Well, what is it that prevents people from turning, uh, every building into an apartment house? That must be.
Two families in the hut. Then you only can have them if they are pre-existing, not conforming.
Well, that's another way to get it, it condo-ization.
I, I think Jocelyn's hit it right on the nose. It's, we, we have a lot of control with use. Um, zoning's hard enough to, to try and regulate how people are. Deeding the property. I, I, I don't even think it, it's within our bounds, honestly, I really don't.
There, there are some slight people who are trying to regulate it, Max, though. And, but what about the fact that like the last two that we did, that we were involved in, not we did, we involved in, those were already pre-existing two families.
Yep.
So they want to, they want to turn it into condos as long as they have the right parking for each unit that they need, right?
I don't even think they need the parking. I think if it's an existing two-family. If it's owned by one person and they want to change it so it's owned as condos, they don't even need the parking. I, I really don't. Think so.
So what you're saying, what you're saying, Max, is a property we dealt with last week on, on Bass Point Road. Would be illegal if it were done as apartments, but it is legal to do as condos, correct?
No, it was already a two-family.
Right, it's already a two-family.
So what, what prevents somebody from taking what's an existing one family and dividing it up into condos? Let's say it's got multiple stories.
Zoning prevents that because that would be a change of use from a single family to a two-family. And a two-family use wouldn't be permitted in that, in that instance.
Right.
Well, is it two-family or is it two condos?
It's, you're, it's a two, like it's a, you have to think of the use of the building.
Right.
And condos is, is how you own it. If you have a two-family owned by one person, it's a two-family. If you have a two-family that is two separate condos owned by two people, it's still a two-family structure. It's just owned by two different people as condos.
Well, I guess my point is we need to be careful of a situation where somebody can gain some advantage. By changing the form of ownership, so they get an advantage that way that they could not do if it were owned by a single owner.
Yeah, Michael, we've run into this in the past, almost, well, and it may be a different way. We had, we've had people come in, you know, and they want to. Um, build a garage. Next thing you know, you drive by and there's an apartment up above it, you know?
Right.
Next thing you know, they come in and they want to subdivide, you know, and sell it.
That, that's right. And, and I mean, the, the, what you just described is the, the, uh, the added garage turns into a, a new apartment. That's exactly the kind of thing that zoning is designed to prevent or at least limit to provide control over.
That's why we, we, we say no to it, so.
Well, okay, but I, I, I'm, my point is. We need to make sure that there is not a, an easy end around the restrictions that the zoning bylaw provides. By simply changing the form of ownership and I'm not sure.
I don't think there is, other than just it creeps in on you, but as long as you are there strong to defend against it. It doesn't give them additional rights.
Right, the use is key, that we have to stick with the use. Because once we start changing that use, that's when you open it up, Michael, for the condominium.
So the use is, the use, we need to be careful about this. The use that pre-exists is pertinent to an entire structure. And not to a, a, an ownership unit. Is that right? And is there something that says that that is so, that that's the way it needs to be analyzed?
Oh, the bylaws say it.
So the, the use as to a, an individual building. Which is capable of supporting multiple units stays with that building in, in spite of whatever division that the owner makes in it.
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the houses along the hot road, um. Uh, trying to think, uh, just past Captain's Pizza. You have, you know, you used to have the, the, the fish store in there and, and the, uh. Dry cleaners and, and above it, there are apartments, so it was a multi-family. Now, we've given uses of a fish store in a, you know, in a, um, a cleaner, dry cleaner as a use.
Yep.
Uh, if they wanted to take that and. Put in condos, say, you know what, I want to sell these units and instead of having a fish store in the first floor, we're going to put a condo there. We're going to put a condo on the second floor and a condo on the third floor.
That'd be a change of use.
It'd be a change of use, so they'd have to come in front of us.
Right.
But if you took two, two houses up, two buildings up, if you took a three-family there.
Yeah.
And turned it into three condos.
They wouldn't have to come in front of us.
Correct.
They don't have to.
Cause it's three dwelling units now and it's going to be three dwelling units in the future.
Okay, so, so my point is what happens is when you do that, you end up having sometimes change. Uh, egress, ingress, things of that sort, because each one now is its own entity. And not.
You know what I'm saying? That's a building, wouldn't that be building department?
Yeah, I think, you know, the building factor to be protecting against things that, that we are protecting against as well. He's like the front lines, right?
Yeah.
Right. So, so in other words, say. If you have that three-story building and I've been in it and now you want to make each one separate, you've got to create new. Egress and ingress for part of the, of the, of the building because.
Not necessarily, it depends on the.
Yeah.
Now you can't walk through somebody else's property to get to your third floor condo.
Property, it might have not been a three-family to begin with, you know, so.
Right, right, I agree, yeah, you would have already.
I just, you know, it, maybe this is, you know, too. Too tactical. I just think that, um. I, what I saw for Bass Point Road, I see. You know, architects and owners doing the same thing here. It's happening everywhere.
David's concerned and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that we, we have, we are, have especially vulnerable to. Manipulation of the kind that we're talking about. However, I'm pretty confident that other towns and other municipalities will have. Uh, condo-ization bylaws that, um, are, are extrinsic to the kind of provisions that we have in our bylaw. So I'm wondering whether it makes sense to take a look at what other towns do. Uh, to, to figure out why they did it, you know, because they could obviously go the, take the route that we have taken. And, uh, obviously they've decided not to and decided to add an additional condo-ization provision, right? So we should probably figure.
About that for a long time, Michael.
I'm sorry?
It'd be great. I've been thinking about that for a long time. Um, I wish that we had, you know, why can't we form a committee? That would make suggestions on by, by law improvements.
I mean, there's got to be, there's got to be literature on this process, you know, on, on the, the lessons of various other municipalities. Here's why they did it, here's the, the problem that they encountered and, and we ought not to be blind to those, uh, those learnings, right?
Oh, and I need to also mention, one more thing before I forget, that is, somebody asked last time about the training. And I contacted them and they're looking for someone who can do it for us via Zoom hopefully.
Oh, good, so.
That's in the works.
So Mike, just so you know, I, I, I've been sitting on this board probably too long. Um, I go back to Paul Morris who sat on the original committee, I think, to help create the original zoning bylaws. And if I recall correctly, that's exactly what they did, was they looked at other communities, other towns. Um, I think that, you know, Marblehead was probably something that they used because of the, you know, oceanfront community, small town type thing. Old, older buildings, uh, but that's what they did. They basically took some of these bylaws and they, you know, kind of. Stole, stolen from other places and, you know.
Well, they, they may have done that and they may have done a good job at the time based on the, the learning and the state of the market and so forth at the time. My understanding is the last major revision of the bylaws was in nineteen ninety when Carolyn Cummings Sacks was involved and the height limitation was imposed. Now, maybe you're thinking of something more recent than that, but.
No, this was, this was good, this goes, go back to the eighties when, when Paul Morris and, and that crew. Basically put together the bylaws.
Right.
Our, our bylaws are not that old.
He told me that, he told me that they copied them from Waymouth. No, no, it's the Waymouth, no.
Winthrop, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, God bless them and, and, and all, you know, hats off to them for what they did at the time based on what the circumstances were. But it seems to me there are probably things that it would be worth our while to look at. To see if they, uh, offer anything that we ought to consider. That's really all I'm saying. Maybe the answer is no. Maybe we conclude that everything we've done right now is cutting-edge sophistication and should be left as it is. But, uh, it seems to me to be perhaps not the most prudent thing to assume that we've got. Cutting-edge provisions and that we're not leaving anything lying on the table.
No, we don't have cutting edge for anything.
Yes, there's nothing in the hot that's cutting edge, except, except for maybe a few Teslas that people own.
Right.
You know, you're, you gotta remember, I watched, I watched this happen in Somerville, alright? That's a, a, a three-family in Somerville that was worth four hundred thousand dollars. Once it turned into condos, the condos were worth a million apiece. Wow. Town and the city went for it because the tax rate on each, you know, you know, was tripling. The taxes they were getting on a three, on a three, uh, family.
Well, that's a civic decision and that, you know, that, that, that makes sense from a fiscal standpoint. But it may not please the adjoining landowners and, and that's really the purpose of the, of the zoning bylaw. To make sure that there is a measure of control about, uh, you know, wildfire-type development, right?
Right, and, and what I'm saying is that this town, which never has any money anyways, could start allowing something like this. And, you know, we, we don't have regulations around it.
It could get, our, 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 our financial planners could get addicted to it, you know?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Question? So, well, this, like I said, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time. What if I were to appoint a committee, to think of the chairman, I can do that, right? A committee of two or three of us to start working on bylaws and then I want to say, that's just one idea, put that aside. The other thing is, is that, um, a long, not a long time ago, but like about maybe six months to a year ago. I was searching for some Bobrovsky materials, you know, he's the guy who wrote the, the Bible for us.
Yep.
Bobrovsky. And he had done a complete overhaul and charged them. Uh, of the town of Agawam, of their bylaws, just a couple of years ago. And someone put it online on a PDF and I actually have it. And I thought to myself, hmm, this is perfect, let's just take this, can see what he, add, you know, what he changed and go through and take what we want out of it. Then we can look at the condo issue. I know that they're, they're looking to add the marijuana issue and. So we can maybe go stop there and then go forward, uh, with some suggestions. And they have to all be voted into the town's mortgage anyway, right?
And obviously nobody's got any copyright on, uh, some other town's bylaw, right?
Right.
Right.
I mean, I, I, going into that, it would probably be a joint committee of a couple of us and a couple of people on the planning board. So that we're not just repeating and chasing each other.
Might be nice if we could put together, like have our own committee and kind of get it started, like in.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, you know, kind of put some ideas together of things we want to change and then, then we should contact them and get the liaison or two and meet together. You know, I think it's a good point. Let's give it some thought.
So that we do end up with a cutting-edge bylaw, right?
Yeah, and you can do it like, it should be happening every year, like you could be making small updates and cleaning things up, like. Just go through all these meetings, you see how many like dead ends there are and how many broken pieces and. That's just natural for bylaws. It's so hard to, it's so hard to write a good zoning section of a bylaw. I, I, I've tried to do it in Swampscut and like, you, you get to one word that can mean three different things and it confuses a sentence and. It's painful and, and we see it come up as we, as we look at, as we interpret the bylaw, so we're probably the best people for it.
Does there exist a, uh, a statewide model bylaw?
There are. Peter, I'm not Peter, I'm Michael. I don't know if you've ever looked at CPCC. Citizen Planning and Training.
Haven't seen it, no, right.
Um, it's a group that works out of Western math that does all education for planners and zoning boards. Planning and zoning boards. And they're incredible. It's like an MCLE of zoning and planning.
Right.
And they're really good and they're the ones who did our training for us in the past.
Did what?
People out and they're going to do it again.
Training, yeah.
Right, yeah. So, um, they're really cool. Look them up. I'll send you a link if you like in a couple of minutes.
Great.
Uh, and then we can, the next time we meet, maybe we can talk about, about doing a committee and stuff like that. Everybody likes it.
Yep, I just, I got some stuff for thought, future thought.
I like it. You're always thinking that, David.
Right.
Yes, I am.
Alright, so now will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Alright, Peter Barber made the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say.
Thank you.
Bye, David, bye, everybody, thank you.
Take care.